All right, good morning. It is ten a.m. and we're in a call meeting to order. I want to thank you for joining us this morning. This is February thirteenth meeting of the planning commission of the city of Denison. Uh, it's our tradition, uh, planning commission that we will begin our meeting with an invitation. And blessed allegiance, if you care to join us, we ask that you stand with us at this time. Mr. Vallee?
Father, we thank you again for another opportunity to be here to conduct the business of our city. We ask that you bless us upon our meeting, and our meeting would be productive. Thank you for the city and for all the blessings that we have since the president, we pray.
Blessed allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, for one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice of our all.
Thank you. All right, little house people, before we get into our agenda this morning, we want to let you know that the planning commission is a recommending body. So if you're here today, your case is a plat, a replat, or a site plan, our, our decisions on those cases will be final. All other cases will be sent to city council for their, uh, final approval, which will be this next Monday.
February nineteenth.
February the nineteenth, thank you. So, uh, on public hearing cases, we'll give you an opportunity to come to lectern and speak this morning. Uh, we'd ask that you would give us your name and address for the record, and we will have a three-minute time limit placed on our speakers this morning. And so that being said, we're gonna move into item three, which is our consent agenda. Do you have any errors, omissions, amendments, or anything we need to change on consent agenda? Or does anyone on the commission wish to pull an item off of consent agenda? Okay, see none, I will entertain a motion.
Mister Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Uh, motion?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item four, public hearings, we're gonna go to item four A, Ms. York.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Good morning. If I could, just remind all of the commission to turn on your microphones. That'll help Ms. Karen out when she does the minutes. Welcome. Item four A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to rezone, uh, in approximately two point nine four acre tract. Identified as GCAD property ID number one four one eight three two. Said property being legally described as lots one through sixteen and including the twenty-foot alley. Block two of Miller's first addition to the city of Denison, Grayson County, Texas, according to the deed recorded in volume Y, page three thirty. Deed records of Grayson County, Texas, being commonly known as seven fifteen West Sears, to amend the current plan development ordinance number five two one eight by changing the current zoning from plan development overlay PD district with a base zoning of single-family residential attached SFTH district to a plan development overlay PD district with the base zoning of multi-family residential MF two district and local retail LR district for residential and retail use, and amending exhibit B development standards and exhibit C concept plan of ordinance number five two one eight, case number twenty twenty-three, one one seven PD.
All right.
Woo, that's a lot.
That's a lot.
Uh, this is the aerial view of that subject property. Uh, this is seven fifteen West Sears located, um, if you remember, this was the old Timtex building that was demolished several years ago. And this is the village concept plan. The applicant is proposing a mid-rise structure, uh, four stories in height to accommodate approximately two hundred units, uh, residential units, I should say, and approximately six thousand square feet of retail space. That retail space is located in the northeast corner of the structure on Morton and Barrett, just for reference. The applicant, uh, in addition to the four stories, is also, uh, proposing a fifth story over that retail space to accommodate eleven of those two hundred units. So four stories for the most part, but just that section over the retail space would be a fifth story to allow for eleven units. Excuse me, the building, uh, the proposed building will have a minimum side and front yard setback of ten feet for yards adjacent to North Armstrong, North Barrett, and West Sears Street. A zero-foot rear yard setback is proposed for the rear yard adjacent to West Morton. Uh, parking for the residence is accommodated via the internal parking garage. You can kinda see here on the concept plan located on the west side of that structure. Um, and the parking is one point five spaces per unit. They're proposing, per the concept plan, three hundred and seventeen total spaces. That is more than enough to accommodate those units. They are proposing, uh, parking spaces located on West Sears Street for visitor, uh, parking, and then for, uh, the leasing or tenant offices that are located along West Sears Street. Customer and employee parking for the retail space is provided, uh, via the parking that you see here on North Barrett Avenue. Um, in the PD, it calls out twenty-two spaces. The concept plan shows about twenty-nine. So there may be a little bit more than what's listed in the PD. Excuse me, a minimum of ten percent of the total lot area will be dedicated to landscaping and usable open space. I will say that in, within the plan development, um, open space of eight percent is met, uh, or it's suggested or proposed that they'll meet that eight percent. So addition, so basically, sorry, two percent will be dedicated to landscaping. They are providing some amenities for their residence, which will include, um, a courtyard, uh, with a pool, grilling stations, uh, open spaces I mentioned for activities, a fitness center, clubroom, and a mail center. These are their proposed, um, elevations. I will say that, um, there are no building standards listed within the plan development. There's no architectural standards or building materials proposed. This is just for zoning. Obviously, this is a zoning case. There will be, uh, if this goes through, uh, recommended approval by this body and then is approved by city council. There are several other, uh, applications that the, um, developer or applicant will have to provide to city staff. One of those will be right-of-way abandonment. There is an alley that goes through this property. Not to give you whiplash, but that alley right there, these are actually platted individual lots. You have some that are fronting on Morton Street and some that are fronting on West Sears Street, and that alley is dedicated right-of-way. Um, upon approval of this zoning, the applicant will have to pursue right-of-way abandonment. And then the other applications include civil engineering plans, a replat, and then a site plan that will come back before this body for approval, given that this would be at that time zoned to PD. Um, staff does also anticipate that a traffic impact study will be required, given the amount of units that this would, um, put on those local streets and along, uh, Morton Street. Um, that will be required at the time of civil engineering plans. This does comply with the comp plan. It allows for neighborhood and neighborhood commercial, commercial for this area. Um, so staff recommends approval of the request. I'm present for any questions that you may have, and so are the applicants.
Any questions of staff? See none? I'd like to hear the applicant's. Sure. Uh, would the applicant like to come forward?
I just wanna introduce myself. I'm Dawson Stafford. All of y'all that, I, I met quite a few of you at the last meeting we had, but, um, just to give you a little background, I am a local person. A lot of you, I've met my wife and daughters that are put in a place down here in the Katy Depot. And, uh, just let you know that I look forward to work, the changes that are coming to Denison. I feel like a city that is changing, is growing, and, uh, I look forward to being a part of that change. And, uh, as far as a person, I wa, I like to build things. I like to do stuff that I'm proud of, and I want something that the city's proud of, not your typical that, that you find anywhere else in town. Um, and just, you know, thank you for your time today, and I'll turn it back over to Jeff.
Hang on a second. Uh, we need your address, right?
Name and address?
Yes, please.
Ninety-one fifty-one Preston Road, Denison, Texas.
Okay, any questions of the speaker before he leaves? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mister Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Jeff Cranell. I'm the project engineer. CCM Engineering, two five seven zero Justin Road, Highland Village, Texas. And here is the engineer. I've also got the project architect, Brian, with us, and, uh, so we're here to present this project. We're very, very excited about it, and it is kinda the future of Denison. We looked at this tract of land and said, you know, we're three blocks from downtown. We're in this kinda revitalization area, and it is a, a good project for this location. It is something that we've met with. We've met with members of staff. We've met with the city. We've had good DRC meetings. This thing has moved along from an engineering standpoint. We think we've got our head kinda wrapped around how all these, all, how all these pieces of the puzzle fit together. And, uh, we've also got the project architect, Brian, here. If we have any questions from the architect, but engineering, it, you know, we, we're ready to get started on this. If, if TNZ and city council is ready to, to approve this project, we're excited to get it moving for the city as well, so. Any questions now, or?
Yeah, I guess the only really question from my side, Mister Stafford, I appreciate the comment you made. I think one of the only concerns I would have is that, I think you dictated that in the, uh, plan documents, you really, the style and structure and kinda the, the overall view or image of this building really can't be dictated, right? So it's, it's somewhat up to, to you on how you build it. You talked about keeping the intent of what's happening downtown Denison and wanting to invest and make this a showpiece. You know, I think that will be the one ask or, or conversation, like to have to make sure that it is, right?
I think his, did you say your project architect is here?
Yes.
So we'll, 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 yeah, we'll visit with him on, on that.
Perfect, yes, and we're, we're off it. We're, we're wide open. We have, uh, we're here to learn and to listen and to provide that. And yes, we want confirmation from us. We want confirmation from the city. We're gonna put a good project on the ground.
Um, when we met previously in the, in the, in a pre-submitment meeting and discussed the project, we, we talked about several different engineering issues that we might run into. Um, the stormwater, um, issues, uh, I think you're gonna go underground with, with detention on this site.
That's right. We've got a very similar project in Fort Worth right now. Uh, underwater or underground detention is how we're handling that. If you look to the east, approximately a block and a half, that's where we've got a decent little open channel. That's where we'll be discharging to. Uh, we may have, we're, we're really early in that analysis, but yes, we'll be mitigating any increase in stormwater and send it to the closest discharge point.
Okay, and you guys are planning on doing a traffic study?
Yes, if we're lucky enough to get past this initial stage, that's the, the checklist item that Diane was talking, Diana was talking about. We're ready to get those started. We've got good traffic access with all four streets and, and, uh, Morton acts as a collector for us, so it's, uh, I'm, I'm comfortable that they're gonna have with maybe some left turn, right turn, things like that. Uh, we do have a parking garage in here. We've located that off of Morton, so we don't interrupt with that traffic. That gives us time to mitigate some of that high traffic demand coming in and out of that, uh, parking garage onto the, uh, side street. And then again, we're two blocks, three blocks from, uh, Main Street. Good traffic control there.
I had a question. Do you know the, the difference in density, population density, from the original PD overlay, uh, townhome to what you're going to now?
There's approximately two hundred units, multifamily units. Townhomes, I don't remember, sixteen, seventeen?
I think that plan was like twenty-four units, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was, I think it was either sixteen on the front and sixteen on the back, so.
So going from?
It was, it, it may have been like twenty-eight.
The townhome you're talking about?
Mm-hmm, twenty-eight. It was between thirty and twenty-eight.
Thirty to twenty-eight to now two hundred and?
Two hundred.
Two hundred.
Two hundred, okay.
Yeah, so definite increase.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's no hiding this, this thing. It's four stories with a small little five-story piece. It's gonna show up out there, and I know we may have some neighbors here. It's gonna definitely be an impact to that neighborhood. We think what we've got here is the future of what the long-term comp plan shows, and we hope downtown becomes a vibrant place to live and.
And so on the townhome overlay, um, would those properties be individually owned at that point?
Yes.
So that they would be contributing to the tax base, right, for?
I mean, they would be individually platted lots.
They would be, okay, versus, this is just gonna be a, a mostly rental properties, I guess, right?
I mean, I would as, I would assume it's an, it's an apartment complex, yes.
All right.
Yeah, it's, it's, this will be a different concept. Uh, it's gonna be approximately fifty million dollars worth of improvement, so there'll be some taxes paid every year through that, through the ad-vorn tax rate. So there'll be a, there'll be an impact there, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the speaker?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, Brian Holst, um, Parker Associates, uh, twenty-two oh two East Forty-Ninth Street, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Um, appreciate you hearing me out on this. Um, I'm the architect on this project. We've gone through some schematic plans. We've, we've designed, um, other similar type projects like this. Um, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have on a specific building and the function and the details of that. We're still in the schematics phase. There is a design development phase that will work out a lot of the details, but, but we feel like we've got a pretty good handle on how the project sits and where it's headed.
Um, I think that has been a major concern among members of the commission is that, you know, in our initial meetings, um, you know, this is what was discussed at the pre-submitment. But no one ever gave us any kind of a commitment as to, you know, that this would be the similar product that we get. So I guess my question is that this schematic that we have is designed specifically for this site. And even though it's conceptual, this is, this is very close to what we're gonna get in reality.
We believe so, yes. Yes, um, gonna do a mixture of finished materials, whether it be, um, mostly brick on the ground floor and extend that up to the second or third floor. We're gonna do, um, either stucco or a, a smooth panel, hardy board, cement board panel that, that represents a stucco type finish. We're gonna put some detail in the balcony, set a hangover the, the street. We're gonna try and get some landscape between the sidewalk and the building, about ten feet of it. We're going to try and make it as pedestrian friendly as we can around the street of the building. And the, the intent and the idea is to, is to make this a catalyst for future developments in the area that this will tie into.
See any questions for the speaker?
Yeah, I think that was, I think you addressed part of the concern I had earlier, just making sure that the, what is presented is kinda what, what the final product is, because there's really nothing, nothing they're holding us to that other than the documents we have in front of us.
Right. We fully intend to. There may be some minor detail changes, like I think that photo shows it all stucco. We may switch to cement board panel. It shows transom windows that are divided. They may be open transom windows. I mean, it, minor details change, but, but that is the intent and, and the, the concept that we are trying to go with.
And to remind the commission, I think I'm correcting this, we're, we're here today basically to address the amending of, of the plat to allow for the, for the number of units. I think the, the density is our main issue today. This will all come back for site plan, uh, approval?
Yes, sir. It will come back for, uh, the commission to take action on the site plan. However, it will, it will have to conform to the PD as it is. So if it, if it winds up not looking like this, but it meets all the, the building codes and the minimum, uh, requirements of those base zoning districts, then that will be on the commission to approve it.
Cause we got some issues, I think, uh, we've discussed with staff, uh, trash, the trash issues and some engineering issues.
Yes.
Those things will all be resolved at that site plan.
They will be, they should be resolved prior to the site plan. The, uh, trash area, um, and any other, um, issues for, with infrastructure or traffic, those should be mitigated through the civil engineering portion, um, and then the site plan would come after that.
All right, any other questions of our speaker? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in favor of this request? Okay, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Anyone else that wants to speak? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And, uh, do we, does commission wanna have any discussion prior to entertaining a motion?
I, I think I have some issues with just, um, the location of this. I, you know, multifamily is definitely needed, but like, um, Ms. Taster just said, we're going from an existing potential population of twenty-eight, is that right, twenty-eight to thirty?
I ca, it's less than thirty, but yes.
Less than thirty, to that, and, you know, within established neighborhoods surrounding that. I, 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 I don't, I can't see that being beneficial to the city with, um, bringing in all that extra traffic at that location. All these neighbors are gonna be affected by that traffic. Um, you know, it's gonna look completely out of place with the surrounding neighborhood that's existing. I, I, I don't see this being an appropriate location for this kinda development there.
Okay. Anybody else?
I agree with Mister Zapata. I think it's a lot of mass, just in general, for that location. I think it is, would be disproportionate to the surroundings. I think it looks beautiful. I wish we had those kind of opportunities for housing. But with, along with Mister Zapata, I think it's a lot of mass for that property.
Well, I, I, I understand, uh, I understand your feelings, because I have a little bit of concern. Traffic is, is one of my concerns too. But these mixed-use developments that we're seeing, and they're, they're, they're going up everywhere. Okay, because this is, this is the future of development, what you're looking at here. Uh, especially when we've got shortage of housing like we have in this country. Uh, and, you know, to answer the question of appropriateness in a particular area, uh, you know, I, I can see both sides of the fence. However, um, I was just in, uh, I was just in Plano Friday evening, and brand-new development has gone up right on the fringe of downtown in the midst of some of their older, more historical houses. Um, oddly enough, it works, it blends. Um, so to me, the, the density, um, and it being a negative impact on the neighborhood, I, I'm, I'm not so sure that, that that, that will be the case. However, I do see that there will be an, an additional generation of, of traffic. So I think the traffic study is imperative that we have that to, to make sure that we're not gonna create some, uh, problems there. Um, that is a text dot, Rob, Morton Street is, so I think, you know, we're gonna need to make sure that we don't have any negative impact on it as well, so. Uh, but as far as the use, um, and the design, I, I'm, I'm not uncomfortable with it in, in that location. I mean, um, I look, I look at things from a standpoint of what could go there that would be even more negative than what this is gonna be. And, uh, I think that is, that's on neighborhood services, is what the?
No, sir. It is zone PD for townhome.
It was PD now, but what, it was?
Oh, prior to that, it was a, it's been a PD for years. Uh, the original PD was, uh, allowed for the manufacturing of, I think, calculators. And then, um, it was rezoned to PD to allow the townhomes.
So at one point in time, they could have built a manufacturing facility on that property. So if you wanna talk about how to negatively impact the neighborhood, there you go. So I think we look at the, we look at the impact based on what could happen, what, you know, so. Uh, that's kinda where I'm, that's kinda where I'm at on it, so.
Yeah, and I, I witnessed, uh, I think what, a lot of what happened to McKinney, and at first I was quite surprised when I saw things like this go in. And I think if they're built to the proper, with the proper intent to maintain, you know, the appearance, make them look like they blend in, fit well with the environment, I was very pleasantly surprised on how they impacted the community there. Because if we want to keep this as a, a vibrant downtown, things need to be within walking distance. We need the people to come down, hit the boutiques, hit the shops, and participate in, in what's happening down here. And I think developments like this, if done correctly, have the opportunity to contribute to that materially, right? That's my, my personal belief. That was, hence asking the questions of how this would be finished out, because I think that is very important to how this is done. You also, at, how like, you already have a high density, higher density than the townhomes, actually across the street from this, down one block, right? Which I would debate on how much that's contributing to the community at a lower density, right? Um, because of the way that was done, right? I, I wish that was done to the extent of this, um, you know, along those lines. I mean, I think if these are done correctly, I'm supportive of this. I don't think the density providing, the traffic takes away from it. And, you know, where that's located, being out on Morton Street, um, looking at what you have going on Austin and other areas, you know, it, it's gonna, I think it'll enhance this, providing it's done correctly. I mean, providing the studies are there and the engineering can support this density, the aesthetics of this, I think everyone will be personally be pleasantly surprised, right? If you drive around McKinney or if you drive around, um, you know, downtown Plano, right? Those are, it, it's amazing what units, very similar to this, I think have done to those communities, providing they're done with the intent, I think that has been presented, right?
And I agree with all of that. I also agree with the necessity for, for options in residential properties within walking distance of downtown. It's very, very important to us. We've been working on that for a really long time. I note that the smallest units could be six hundred and seventy square feet. So I'm assuming that built into the whole concept that there's something that might be called affordable rents. Do you have any concept about that?
At, at this stage, I don't think we do. Um, they, they are smaller units. They're units that would use in, uh, other urban environments. Um, but I don't believe that we've got as far as what the, the rental.
They're not, they're not gonna be a, a section eight project. This is gonna be market rate rent. So they're gonna be similar to what Gateway is probably charging, I would imagine, on this project. Keep in mind too, that we have commercial use to the east and west of this project, correct?
Yes.
So the corner of Morton Street and Armstrong is a commercial use with a restaurant. And then on, on the east side, um, what is that building over there, Diane?
I'm not sure. Uh, I've, the one across the street is, uh, the plumbing. The one to the east, I'm not sure, but the, the one right across the street and the city east and to the west are all zoned to local retailer commercial.
Yep. Anybody else?
Yeah, I still just have difficulty, because they, they can tell us they're gonna do something, and then there's nothing really to hold them to that, or?
Well, yeah, I think there is, because when they come back, we will have the, we will have the, I mean, there's a limit to what we can say anyway, because of state law.
But we'll have changed the zoning, so that density is going to be allowed if we approve it.
Yeah, the density, again, uh, in my opinion, the success of this project, as far as staff's concerned, as far as we're concerned, and probably as far as council's concerned, rests on the shoulder of the architect. Cause he's gotta make this feel good, and, and the appearance has to be, I think, what we want. Uh, I mean, I can't tell him what he can build it out of. The state says I can't do that. But, um, when it comes back to us, I mean, we, we, I think we have the wherewithal to make sure that the product is what we want.
As long as they meet the standards, they'll be able to build whatever they want, though.
If, if I could just interject just a second. The multifamily two zoning district does not have any development standards related to architectural standards. Um, if there is, if the commission so chooses to ask or feels it's necessary to add architectural standards into the PD, I would ask that you ask the applicant if that's feasible, but it might be something that we add, cause, into the plan development. Because if it comes back and they build it to the development standards that are listed in multifamily two, and it meets the building codes, but it doesn't necessarily meet the pictures or the, um, elevations that have been provided today, there, there will be.
pictures or the elevations that have been provided today, there will be, there will be no reason to deny that site plan. And I feel like that may be a concern that I hear amongst the commission, so I just wanted to make that point.
So, and in my past experience, I'm used to the concept, architecture being a part of the PD. I'm used to that, so why can't we go ahead today and make the concept, elevation concepts a part of the PD?
We can definitely propose that with our legal team and maybe include it as an exhibit to the PD.
Okay. Who's, Mr. Dawson, or the architect? Okay.
Don't need to announce myself again?
No.
Okay. Conceptually, on the finished materials, is that where we're getting at, or are you looking at this?
No, because we don't have any authority on materials in Texas in the honor, so you're free to do what you want there. I mean, you're, it looks like to me what you've done is totally acceptable. I think what we're mainly concerned about is the actual design itself. What we don't want is to come in and build something that is, for lack of a better term, budget-friendly, because then you stripped all the detail out, you know, you're showing me these, you know, these nice corbels and different elements that you've included in this. And think to us, being as, the amount of money we're spending downtown right now to revitalize our downtown area, this is adjacent to, it's on one of our main arteries. We, it's not, I don't have a problem with the use, I don't have a problem with the density personally. But what I am being careful of is the product that we get is going to be first class. That's what I want to see built on that site. And I mean, the elevation, the rendering that you guys brought into our staff pre-submitting meeting that we did, that's what we're looking for.
Right.
Okay? And I guess what we're asking you guys for is, we want some surety, that's what we're going to get.
As I said originally, we believe it is. It's still in preliminary stage, and I'm not sure as far as how much flexibility we have on it. You're going to get the balconies, you're going to get the big windows, you're going to get, get the materials that are shown, four stories and flat roof. It's going to be very similar, but whether there are corbels on the raised parapet or the detail work. Can we go with something, part of the site plan approval to also have, have some type of review for the elevations on it? I mean, we anticipate doing something very similar, but the detail work in that really hasn't been worked out yet, and I kind of hate to.
Well, that's been my concern, though, is if we approve this, like they, our staff just stated, if ownership changes hands for some reason, you know, the economy goes somewhere we don't want it to go. Whoever's holding that PD can build according to the existing standards, which are not exactly what we see and what you're giving us. And that's going to be allowable, and we won't be able to stop that.
I think.
That's why I was, and again, we've got to be careful with this, because we don't want to cross the state's rules. But I don't think we're necessarily asking you to approve certain architectural elements. I think what we're, what we're looking for is if we adopt this concept, then when you come back to us with the site plan and everything, that that concept is very close, very similar to what we've, what we've.
Right.
Approved. If we just approve the density today and you guys leave, then it might, we don't really have any, you know, you can come back with anything and we're just kind of, you know.
Yeah, you can go to Frisco and see this giant gaping hole at the corner of Lebanon, because they came with promises that something was going to be built, and it never did. And so there's giant, giant hole now in the corner of that property over there. So even though they promised that they were going to build to a certain standard, of course, they didn't, and now the city is left with kind of an eyesore there.
I mean, I personally like your design, what you've got here.
Thank you.
And I would like to see us be able to adopt that into the PD.
I, I think that that's doable. I would ask that the commission make that recommendation when they get ready to make the recommendation for this.
So are you guys comfortable with us doing that?
I think so, yeah, from what I do. Dawson?
Okay, all right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, folks, ladies?
I like the way it looks. I think it would be a wonderful addition. Thank you for the vision.
Okay, that be the case. I'll entertain a motion, and whoever makes the motion, we want to add the addition that the elevation concepts that have been presented today would be adopted into the motion as a part of the PD.
I'll give this a go. I move to recommend the approval to request the amend, amend the planned development overlay district to a planned overlay district with base zone multifamily residential MF2 district and local retail district, amending Exhibit B development standards and Exhibit C concept plan, including the, and adding the elevation standards, or adding the elevations that are in this amendment to the PD.
I'll second that motion. Can we add one thing to that? The conceptual elevations, if you will, please. All right, we have a motion to second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. We have four ayes and one nay, so motion carried. All right, let's go to item five, staff updates.
I only have one staff update. The zoning case that came before the commission last meeting, which was the rezoning from the single-family 7.5 to commercial for that building located on FM 120, that was passed. So it's now rezoned. Mary, do you have anything? Okay.
Okay. In that's the case, and I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Seven minutes, second.
Got a motion with a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned at 10:37 a.m.